Welcome to our Greeley-Evans School Board Meeting. It is Monday, May 14th, 2018. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye. Present.
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mr. Lydia? Mr. Matthews?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lydia is in France and is not going to answer you. He is excused this evening.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Ms. Solis?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, there's so many people here tonight that are anxious to move on this program, and so we are going to pay attention to that clock as much as we can. Do you want to take a second to point out that we have kind of a set of passwords and secret handshakes around our school district that pledge to provide a safe, secure, and successful educational experience for our students? And we have three words that kind of stand for that pledge, and that's engage, empower, and inspire. And let me break down those three words with a couple of quick examples. Under engage, I think I'd like to point out the fact that we're in the midst of hiring new employees for next year, teaching staff and support staff, and we are grateful for their decision to join us as we get students throughout the year. We also want to acknowledge that our retirees, whom we recognized last week, are engaging in that which comes after a lifetime of work, and we wish both sides, both the incoming and the outgoing faculty and staff members, the best of luck. Certainly want to talk about those folks who are graduates. This is that phase under empower. You guys are on your own, you're under your own power, sort of, and we've crossed our fingers for you and prepared as much as we can with you, and we wish you well, but don't forget to drop back by and let us know how things are going with your own empowerment. And I think it goes without saying, and somebody would be in trouble if he didn't say it, look around the room and see our inspiration, the individuals who are going to be recognized tonight for a variety of really fantastic accomplishments, and some of the recognitions we have offered before, but it's still worth doing a second time or a third time. These are committed students to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement in themselves, and in doing so, they're improving our school district. So we welcome you guys and we thank you. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay. You have to speak louder in both ears. Okay, something's going on here that I don't know about, somebody will have to explain to me later. Hearing a person's desiring to speak before the board, have we anyone who's expressed an interest? All right, thank you very much. How about the work session report, Ms. Crane?
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement, Dr. Stacy Dattery, and avid and secondary language arts coordinator Amanda Krieger provided information on the recommended secondary English Language Arts Curriculum Proposal. Chief Financial Officer Megan Sponsler provided an update on the 2018-2019 budget planning process, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Pilch, it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks.
It has been, Mr. DeWitt, and this is really a glorious time of year where we're getting ready over the next 16 days to graduate students here in District 6 and in our community. We will see over 1,200 graduates cross the stage in the next week and a half, so really an exciting time for District 6. And, you know, this is really what it's all about, is making sure that every student is prepared for college and career. So congratulations, and many of the principals are in the room tonight, and, you know, I just want to recognize each of you again for the hard work you do to ensure that every student has a plan for graduation and beyond. So thank you for that work. I have some awards I want to brag about tonight.
Well, great.
Some very exciting news. Early College Academy, our Early College Academy, was recognized by U.S. News as one of the nation's bronze schools. So what this means is out of over 20,500 schools that were considered for this recognition, only 2,800-plus schools were recognized in the nation, and our Early College Academy is one of those schools. They received this recognition because they, their students have performed well in measures exemplifying that they are ready for college, so that's typically our state assessment, the SAT, but they are also, historically, they are underserving. And history is only three years now, but they are, the underserved, students identified as underserved by this award are outperforming their peers in the nation. So this is, you know, this is very exciting and great news for Early College Academy and a nice feather in their hat for the work they're doing there. And they will graduate their first class of Early College Academy graduates on Saturday. Friday night, I had the opportunity to attend the Ames Community College graduation where some of our Early College Academy graduates attended and received their Associate of Arts degree in that ceremony. So a lot of fun going on with Early College Academy. I also want to recognize our communications department, and, you know, Teresa Myers, our Director of Communications, she does not help me to write these things because she's very humble, and if you were in the room, you'd see right now that she's pretty embarrassed. But our communications department, right here in Little Greeley-Evans School District 6, has received some of the top state honors for public relations and public relations campaigns, as recognized by their peers, the Colorado School of Public Relations Association. They were honored recently in Denver at a ceremony. They won the highest honor that any school district organization can win for their work that they did outside of the workday to support the Mill Levy override.
Ooh.
And the campaign materials they developed and how they communicated related to the Mill Levy override. And I'll say again, every bit of it outside of the workday, because we were so careful around our Fair Campaign Practices Act. And the materials were beautiful, from the mailings to the yard signs to the Facebook posts. So congratulations to our communications team for that significant honor. One of the things that the judge said about them, and then I'll stop Teresa, they said, "It was amazing. You were able to allow stakeholders to relate to all the different people connected in your school district, and you impacted the district. It was genius." At the end of the day, why this matters so much is because it resulted in $14 million more annually for our kids here in District 6. So once again, thank you to the communications department, and thank you to our voters who approved this. Thank you, thank you, thank you. In addition to that, they also received recognition for the many other materials that they've created over this past year, for Fred Charter School of Innovation, the redesign of our district website. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, check it out. The Student Spotlight, and then all of the work that they've done to promote Early College Academy and to get families to come to Early College Academy. So again, congratulations to all of you. I'm almost done?
Thank you.
There's a couple people in the room I'd like to introduce to you all. So on our personnel agenda tonight, which our personnel agenda is always a consent agenda item, so we don't go through it person by person, but a couple of the folks on that agenda item are here tonight, and they are new to our administrative team, so I'd like to introduce them to you. So I see standing on the back wall Pamela Bach, our new Assistant Principal at Montford Elementary School. Pamela, give us all a wave.
If we vote that way.
And Pam has been a teacher in our district for some time now. She was at Bella Romero Academy, and then she went over to Montford, something about, you know, following that principal, Justin Ungerhauer, over there. So congratulations, Pam. We're excited to have you on our district leadership team. She replaces Jody Mueller, who is going to move into a gifted and talented specialist position here in the district. So congratulations, Pam, and welcome. And then I want to introduce to you all Kent Henson, as our Assistant Superintendent of Support Services. All right, Kent, I know you're back there.
There he is.
Give a wave. Kent replaces Brad Johnson, who is retiring at the end of August. We're excited that Brad will be around here for a few months yet to help in this transition and really to help us to have a really clean transition plan, which I know leaves people to wonder, hmm, well, what's going to happen at Greeley Central High School where Mr. Henson has been serving as principal? So we have geared up that process, and we are in the throes of screening applications now and doing reference checking and hope to bring you a candidate at your June meeting for consideration for the principal at Central High School. And if any of you have friends who you think might be interested in serving as principal at Central High School, there's a lot of you in the room here, make sure you're reaching out to them, because we want to bring the strongest candidate pool possible to that school community. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Pilch. Very soon, you can expect your names to be mentioned, so don't give up hope. Just a few more little things to do. The audience at home, the six or seven of you, you have no idea how many people are in this room, and so that's why this is a special occasion. The next item is approval of the agenda, and a motion's going to be required to act on this item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any question or comment, some discussion about this standard item? Okay. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to consider this item.
It's not showing up on mine, but I'm going to try it. I move that the Board of Education accept the consent agenda as presented and authorize the officers to sign any and all documents necessary.
You've done this before.
Couple times.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Comments, questions, discussion? Very well. Roll call, please, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, I think we've kept some of these people waiting long enough.
We have Mr. DeWitt.
This is an item that we want to hear about, Betcher and Daniels Fund Scholars, please.
So these are very special recognitions here in District 6, in any school district. These are some of the highest honors that graduating seniors can receive in terms of scholarship dollars and recognition. So it is wonderful to see the crowd in the room tonight. I hope we're getting a picture of this, Ms. Myers. So we first want to recognize our Betcher Scholarship winners. Two District 6 seniors have received notification that they received this prestigious scholarship from the Betcher Foundation. Hannah Kibbers, a senior at Greeley Central High School, and Mark Morales, a senior at Northridge High School, have both been named Betcher Scholars by the Betcher Foundation. Congratulations to both of you. Mark and Hannah, if you are here tonight, we'd like to invite you to join us. And Mr. DeWitt will meet you at the podium. Yeah, great. Come on up, Hannah, I'm going to talk about you a little bit, okay? Hannah was named a National Advanced Placement Scholar in her junior year, meaning that she scored four or higher, that's out of five, on eight or more advanced placement exams. Hannah said that clubs and activities have been a big part of her high school experience. She's involved in Key Club, National Honor Society, Varsity Cross Country, she's a part of the Arts Magnet, and the Best Buddies Program, which is a club that pairs typical students with their peers who are disabled. Hannah exemplifies District 6, and Hannah, we hope that in years to come, you will say, "I am District 6." Congratulations, Hannah. Thank you. So it looks like Mark was not able to join us tonight. I have confirmation on the back wall that he has a conflict tonight. So I want to tell you about Mark nonetheless. Mark is involved with the STEM Academy at Northridge High School, the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Academy, as well as the Gear Up Program. He and a group of his peers in the STEM Program have been busy building a one-and-a-half-meter-long laser that will cut steel. They are designing a laser to cut steel. Mark also mentors a student at Franklin Middle School, where he was once a student. He is involved in the Gear Up Program and the Greeley Dream Team. We have six students here in District 6 who are being recognized as Daniels Fund Scholars. The Daniels Fund is a very prestigious scholarship again that is awarded to students in a five-state region, which Colorado is one of those states. This is a tremendous honor for these six seniors, and we are very proud to have you here in District 6. These scholarships are paid for through the Daniels Fund, which is a private foundation that was started by entrepreneur and cable television pioneer Bill Daniels. These scholarships cover four years of full tuition and fees, room and board, books, and miscellaneous educational expenses for the scholars. The scholars must attend an accredited, nonprofit college or university anywhere in the United States. For this year's winners, excuse me, four of this year's winners are from Northridge High School. The District 6 Daniels Scholarship recipients for 2018 are, and I would like each of you to come up, Michelle Lopez from Greeley West High School, Gustavo Gabriel Hernandez, Northridge High School, Mark Louis Morales, Northridge High School, Joshua Martin Torres, Northridge High School, Cody Rayon Wells, Northridge High School, and Margaret Elizabeth Longcorre, And don't leave yet, students. So similar to the Betcher Scholars, the Daniels Fund Scholars are taken through a rigorous process to be selected for this prestigious award. They are scoured from top to bottom. Right, Meg? They look at their activities they're involved in, they look at the coursework they've taken in high school, if they've accessed, oh, is this Gustavo?
No, it's Mark.
Oh, Mark. Mark, okay. Who else have we missing? Anybody else? Mark, welcome.
I'll get one more picture.
Glad you're here. We'll get your picture one more time. These students exemplify District 6 in that they have not only excelled academically and taken some of the most rigorous coursework that we offer, including college courses and advanced placement courses, but they are also leaders in their schools. They are involved in extracurricular activities, they volunteer in the community, they have completed community service, and if I'm not mistaken, Gustavo, don't you have a construction business already? Was that you? No? Almost! He only almost has a construction business. Just almost. So these students exemplify District 6, and like I said to Hannah, guys, I hope that for years to come, you will proudly say, "I am District 6." Thank you for all you've done to contribute to our community. So, Mr. DeWitt, may I just have the microphone for one more moment?
Absolutely, feel free.
Okay. Now that we've done the most important part, which is recognizing the students, I want to recognize the family and extended family who are in the room, and I want to recognize the teachers and administrators who are in the room, and the other staff, the Gear Up staff, and the volunteers and the mentors who contributed to the success of these kids. Really great kids don't just turn out. Really high achievers don't just happen. Lots of people contribute to those high achievers, and I see a lot of you in the room who did that. So if you in some way, some little way, contributed to the success of these scholars tonight, will you please stand and be recognized? And those of you on the back wall, come forward. Thank you.
This is pretty inspiring, don't it, Dave?
Yes, it is.
We're having a great time here. We're going to do a couple of other little steps, and there'll be a large number of other students recognized, but those of you who've already been embarrassed and recognized, if you need to sneak out to do your homework, who are we to tell you no? The next item is going to require a motion to consider, it's the Proclamation for Educator Appreciation Days.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 adopts honorary proclamation declaring that educator appreciation days be celebrated in the district during the month of May 2018.
Second.
Moved in second, and thank you very much. And I will read the proclamation which you have approved. I will sign, and it will recognize the individual group members that are associated with this proclamation. It is an honorary proclamation of the World Board of Education, the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6. It's for National Physical Education and Sport Week, National Teacher Appreciation Week, National School Nutrition Employee Week, National School Nurse Day, National Education Bosses Week, and there are dates that will be identified at the end of the proclamation. Whereas a well-educated public is essential to the preservation of our national freedom and our democratic system of government, and whereas the people of the United States have recognized that free access to public education for all children is a vital component of a strong and vibrant country, and whereas the Board of Education recognizes and honors the important impact that teachers have on our children's education, and whereas a rich and well-rounded education includes curriculum, instruction, and support for the physical health and well-being of our children, and whereas children's education and the success of their schools is also dependent upon exceptional and dedicated leadership at the school and district level, and whereas it's appropriate that teachers and educational leaders be publicly recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating students, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 proclaims the following national recognition dates to be celebrated and recognized in our local schools and communities of Greeley and Evans during the month of May. Physical Education and Sport Week, we may be just a little behind on this recognition. You can celebrate it for the rest of the month, but it's officially May 1 through 7 of 2018. Teacher Appreciation Week, also belatedly, May 7 through 11, 2018. Nutrition Employee Week, 7 through 11 of May on 2018, and School Nurse Day, May 9, 2018, and National Education Bosses Week, ah, we're in time, May 20 through 26, 2018. You can continue to celebrate all month long for all of those individuals. Comments or questions about this proclamation? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, I'd be pleased and proud to sign that for the board. Dr. Pilch, the next item goes back to you. It's Student Spotlight Recipients Recognition.
I'm a little slow on the uptake due to technology. I think Mr. Haley was experiencing the same issue earlier. This year, we have featured 29 students in our Student Spotlight Program. This program, which is funded through a sponsorship grant with Banner Health, has allowed our communications department, yes again, to fund a weekly quarter-page ad in the Greeley Tribune and on the Tribune website, featuring these excellent students, all from District 6 K-8 middle and high schools, including our charter schools. The communications team also produces a video of each of these students and features the students prominently on our website and promotes the student winners in District 6 social media. Students are selected by administrators and staff at the featured schools. A copy of the advertising feature will be on display in the District 6 lobby for the next school year. I think you all have seen those out here from previous school years. This is a very positive program in our district. We enjoy featuring some of our finest moments in District 6, which, of course, are students here in District 6, and we have far more students worthy of recognition than what we are able to recognize, but we're very pleased to recognize the students this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, Mr. DeWitt. Yes, this is a very exciting program we've been able to do annually. Thank you very much to Banner Health for the sponsorship of these advertisements, for which we would not be able to do it without. We're going to bring up the students that are here. I may have missed some students, so I'm going to go ahead and read off everyone. If you're here, if you would come forward, we have a phone board of your advertisement that ran in the paper. We're going to give one to you and one to your school. So if you are administrator at the schools that we call out, if you could come up with your student, and we'll have you gather up here for a quick picture. From our K-8 schools this year, Montserrat de Santiago Canales from Bella Romero, I think she was here tonight, Kirsten Harkins from Chapala. Sarah Aragon from Krista McAuliffe, I don't think she was able to come. Noah Cale from Fred Charter School of Innovation. LD Buie from Harold S. Winograd, K-8, I don't think LD was able to make it. And then Dylan Coria Hernandez from Winograd. None of our Winograd folks. All right. Next, we'll move on to our charter schools. From Frontier Academy, Andrea Tavanti, Gloria, is she here tonight? I know Ms. Rodriguez is here from Union Colony. I met her. Come on in. And Justin Knapp from University Schools. From our middle schools, we have Alora Mann from Brentwood. From our middle schools, we have Alora Mann from Brentwood.[595.73][595.73](applause) I don't think the twins from Brentwood were able to make it. Did Kara Schutler and Tanian Schutler make it? They had twins recognized this year for the first time. Natalia Lopez from Franklin.[638.73][638.73](applause) Blake McCula from Heath Middle School.[650.04][650.04](applause) Peyton Coley from Heath Middle School. She even make it? No. Bridget Hulak from Prairie Heights Middle School.[669.62][669.62](applause) And Curtis Gutierrez from Prairie Heights Middle School.[682.54][682.54](applause) Our high school winners, and a lot of them were unable to attend tonight, I know, because they have conflicts. It's a busy time of year, but we'll go ahead and recognize all of them. We have Claudia Luna Rojas from Early College Academy. I think she was able to make it. Emily Carrera from Early College Academy. I know Drew Settling is here. Hi Drew, from Greeley Central High School.[720.16][720.16](applause) And Hannah Kibbers from Greeley Central High School.[732.12][732.12](applause) Vincent Ferrando from Greeley West High School.[742.32][742.32](applause) And Grace Haal from Greeley West High School.[751.62][751.62](applause) Norma Lozano from Jefferson Junior High.[761.12][761.12](applause) Elise Leba from Jefferson High School.[773.88][773.88](applause) Paxton Shepherd from Jefferson High School.[782.23][782.23](applause) Tyler Pereria from Northridge High School.[794.62][794.62](applause) And Kaylee Borsky from Northridge High School. I think our Northridge kids were all busy tonight.[806.23][806.23](applause)
Maybe with the administrators in the back.
Yeah, administrators in the back.
Yeah. I don't think you can stand behind him, Kim. There you go. Come on in. Just crunch in there.
All right. We've been on the upstairs. All right. Okay, one, two, three.
And after the photos, will you all stay where you are for another second? Let me know when the photos are done, because we can't see through this wall.[853.12][853.12](laughing)
All right, Mr. DeWitt, I think we're pretty close.
May I ask all of you to turn around and just wave at your school board? Because we get this close, and this is as close as we get. But congratulations to all of you.[878.43][878.43](applause) Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Dorma. Congrats.
Thank you. It's good to see you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, now, students, congratulations. Before you get dragged into a long discussion of policy issues, maybe you too have homework that you would like to engage in at this time.
Let them jump up, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, you guys.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Something I said.[916.54][916.54](laughing) Yes.[918.54][918.54](laughing)
Well, and as they are departing the building, Dr. Pilch, we do have an item coming up for consideration, the Secondary English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption, and we did discuss this in our work session.
I think we have one board policy before that.
That was the policy I threatened people with. Oh, okay, great. Let's do that. It's our second read. Now that the folks are nearly out of the room, second read, adoption of policy JLC, Student Health Services and Records. It is an action item, so I'd be glad to receive a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six adopts policy JLC, Student Health Services and Records as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Now, Dr. Pilch, do you mind picking this up from here and introducing anyone you need to along the way? Are you set to go?
On the policy?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a second read of a policy we looked at at our last board meeting that is, primarily changes again to ESA, or the changes with ESA that are resulting in the adoption of this new policy.
This replaces No Child Left Behind with something associated with Every Student Succeeds Act.
Correct.
Going from December of 2013 or something, and now we're making the changes, essentially updates and just shows that we are compliant.
Yes. And really, this policy codifies practice that we've had in place here in District Six for quite some time. We're ahead of the game.
Naturally. Okay, it's good to know. Comments from the board or questions? I don't see anyone with any new questions since our last opportunity to discuss this. Roll call. Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Now that I'm not skipping something, can we talk about the Secondary English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption, Dr. Pilch? I was so anxious.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think, Mr. DeWitt, as you started to say, we had a lengthy discussion about this in the work session, where we received a more in-depth report than what you'll receive tonight around the process of curriculum adoption and selection for language arts. I'll just set it up by reminding you all that our current language arts materials are a decade-plus-old at the secondary level, so in grades six through 12. So what staff will be recommending tonight is, they will be recommending two adoptions, one for middle level, that will be adopted at our middle schools and K-8s, at the middle level of those K-8s, and then one for high schools as well. There's been a large team, as you all saw earlier in the presentation, a large team that's been working now for several months. And really, Dr. Dattery and her immediate team have been working on this for well over a year, in hopes and anticipation of middle levy override dollars to pay for this. So the reason we are a decade-plus-old with our language arts curriculum adoption is because we simply have not had the resources until the middle levy override to pursue an adoption. So our voters, our middle levy override, our taxpayers are allowing us to bring this proposal to you all tonight for consideration. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dattery, our Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, President DeWitt, and members of the board. Tonight, I am bringing forward to you a recommendation from our Secondary English Language Arts Adoption Committee, as well as the District Curriculum Council. These materials were last updated prior to the implementation of our new Colorado State standards. As such, our current resources are lacking as students need to read and analyze complex texts, cite textual evidence in writing, and evaluate a variety of source material for quality and relevance, among several other expectations within those standards. Students are then expected to transfer their ability to perform the skills and strategies on high-stakes state assessments. In addition, the landscape of instruction has changed, and in order to successfully prepare students for college and career readiness in the 21st century global society, both traditional and digital components of curricular resources are necessary. Therefore, this year, we are asking the board for approval of secondary English Language Arts materials brought to you this evening. And in the next few slides, I will share with you the process and the results of the work of this committee this year. Within the Colorado academic standards, there has been a shift in reading and writing expectations, and formal resources did not support our teachers and students to reach the level of rigor of the standard. In order to be successful on CMAS, PSAT, and SAT, students need explicit instruction on reading and analyzing complex texts and citing textual evidence. In addition, resources need to be flexible and customizable to meet the needs of diverse groups of student learners, and contain the technology integration components to prepare them for the 21st century. Resources must also provide skill and strategy instruction that promotes higher levels of instruction and thinking, and students need to be able to have the ability to retrieve and apply appropriate skills and strategies in multiple contexts. All of these criteria were considered by the Secondary English Language Arts Adoption Committee during the curriculum review process, so that the new resources we bring to you tonight would be in complete alignment. And I'm pleased to be able to share with you that many teachers and leaders were a part of this important process, a few of whom have joined us in the audience today. So if you could raise your hand, teachers that had...[1314.41][1314.41](applause) Truly thankful for your leadership and the leadership of your peers. We have 20 teachers that participated in this process, and four administrators. And one of those administrators is Amanda Krieger. She is our Secondary English Language Arts Coordinator, as well as Avid, and she has done an exemplary job of leading this team. In addition to Mr. Dagan Andrews, who is our Instructional Technology Director, and will be taking on curriculum as we move into next year as well, and his partner in crime, Ms. Diana Riley, who is also a big part of all the curriculum work as director this year in that area. They have been amazing as a collective team at learning together, sharing their ideas, sometimes wrestling over what those ideas mean and what they need to be looking for, and evaluating those resources, so that they can truly best meet the needs of all of our students at the secondary level. Before I share with you the recommendation, I will just walk you briefly through the process and timeline of the Curriculum Adoption Committee's work in determining this recommendation that I bring to you tonight. So during the month of January, the committee shared their greatest hopes and most pressing concerns around student literacy, and then created a common vision and purpose for determining a quality resource that would best meet the needs of our students and support our teachers in this work. From February through April, then, the committee previewed a variety of potential resources and chose to review more deeply those that most closely aligned with the Colorado academic standards in reading, writing, and communicating, and were in alignment with the Colorado measures of academic success, including the PSAT and the SAT. In mid-April, the best resources were then identified for each level using the analyzing instructional materials process, and then the publishers from those top choices presented to the committee and the district community was invited to review the resources and provide additional feedback. On April 30th, the final selections were made for middle and high school, and on May 8th, those recommendations were shared with the District Curriculum Council. In addition, through April, the recommended materials were on display at each middle, K-8, and high school, as well as in the lobby of the District Administration Building, to gain feedback and provide input from the school and district community. Tonight, the committee's recommendations are being brought to the board to act upon the recommendation. Based on evidence generated through the selection process, the committee is recommending Study Sync, published by McGraw-Hill for grades six through eight, and Spring Board, published by College Board for grades nine through 11. We believe our process has been rigorous, as evidenced by the materials in your board packet, and that we have chosen the very best instructional resources. These resources connect writing, reading, and grammar, as called for in the state standards, and in the PSAT and SAT, and supports the teaching and learning of argumentative, informational, explanatory, and narrative writing. As outlined in the standards, without quality curriculum resources, teachers are left to supplement the curriculum with what they have or what they can piece together, which is time-consuming, as we know, for teachers, and it may lower the quality for student learning. We believe our teachers and our students deserve quality resources. The total cost of these materials for middle and high school, including the shipping and handling, will be approximately $662,963.15. I, we, thank you for your time this evening, and we will be happy to address any questions you may have.
Well, this does require action on the part of the board. I'd be glad to get a motion for this.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the adoption of English Language Arts Curriculum as presented.
Second. Thank you both. And I'll open the door to communication from board members. We did have the opportunity to speak with you a little bit along the way, but here it comes. Ms. Solis.
So I just want to thank everyone. As someone that doesn't come from education, really hearing all the different aspects that happen into looking into curriculum, and the amount of time, discussion, just, you know, investigating all the different things, and then really taking a look at where we are now, and trying to predict where we are in the future, and how best to spend this money. And I know it's a lot of pressure for everyone, because these are tax dollars, and I don't think, sometimes we as community members realize how intense these decisions are, and how much heart and passion goes into them, because you want the best for kiddos. But please thank everyone that was involved. This is amazing work, way overdue, and, you know, this is the exciting part of the MLO, is to really being able to bring stuff like this forward and really see it make a difference. So please thank everyone on your staff that worked on this. Thank you, everyone that's in the audience. Thank you for your time. And, you know, the tough questions, I'm sure there were some really long discussions around these issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haley.
I was part of some of those curriculum adoptions a long time ago, and I greatly appreciate the things that you're doing, the alignments with the various tests. I mean, that is incredibly hard work. The idea of having Lexile ability, the co-teaching components, and the flexible resources are all really important. You know, with the professional development, you know, next year with the six days for the educators, that's spectacular. The curriculum alignment where we have the appropriate resources is great, but I'll be really honest with you, I am really dismayed and concerned that we don't have the monies to be able to pay our educators to come in during the course of the summer. And I would hope that somehow, you know, at some point that we could find that. But that's, that's one thing that's really, really disappointing to me in this whole thing. But I'm for this, I'm delighted for it, but there are a couple of things we need to tweak a little bit.
Other comments? Dr. Richard, please.
Just echoing the same thank yous for the thoroughness and your work on that, and you probably noting that we're not asking many questions, but making comments, because we did spend quite a bit of time talking about this. But I come back to our strategic plan, and a pivot point for us is that student learning and achievement. And this is a vital key tool to helping our teachers be able to carry out that part of our strategic plan, and I'm just, I'm pleased that we're going to be able to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. It strikes me that anything that we would do, after we've been sitting with materials that are 10-years-plus-old, would probably be a step up. But I appreciate also that it was not that easy, and that a good deal of time and discussion went involved to get materials that will reflect the students who are in our district, including diverse authors and a variety of topics, and a way to get every student who is in the classroom involved in the same material, not necessarily at the same level, but on the path to that material. It had a little... I had a little minor flashback a little bit ago here today, that if we had had the opportunity to buy a replacement for this material four years ago, we probably wouldn't have found material with as much digital content. So I'm going to try to put a happy face on the notion that we stuck with that older material a little longer, and now we are maybe getting a better product for the next few years that we will be using this, until the next renewal time. But again, so many thank yous to the people who were involved in getting this knitted together in the selection process, and now the application of this material as soon as we can get it in your hands. And thank you for that. Additional comments? Dr. Pilch?
Well, you've offered.
Oh, I did, indeed, ma'am.
I do want to say one thing, and thank you for thanking the staff for all the hard work. You know, I've been doing this for 30 years, and one of the stints I had long ago was that of Director of Curriculum Instruction, K-12. And to be able to bring a team of teachers and administrators together and to get consensus on an implementation of a curriculum is nothing short of miraculous. But I want to commend Dr. Dattery and the staff, the teachers, who all engaged in this in a consensus-building way. They used the structures from our consensus work that we do here in the district and our shared decision-making work. And when you heard earlier this evening from Amanda that it was true consensus work, it truly was. I had the opportunity to see them. I never participated, but I walked through them, literally walked through them, on a couple of occasions, and they were in circles, and they were working to understand and hear each other and to make the very best decision possible for the students here in District 6. So for that, you should be as proud as you are of the fact we're getting new content for our students. So thank you, and thank you to you all.
Dr. Dattery, thank you very much. I don't see any other comments coming, so I'm going to ask Ms. Crane for a roll call, please.
Mr. Dewitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries, six zero.
Congratulations, you guys. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Certainly want to thank everyone for participating. It's been a high moment night with all of our congratulations going all the way around. These are the last times for some of our students in the district. We've got to keep them working, and we thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.